We can call this public hearing back into order. We just finished the testimony in opposition to the application. Now, we will go ahead and see if anyone has any, anyone from the public would like to testify in the neutral capacity? Okay. See none, how about staff? Come on up.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony we're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Tom Jacob, planning staff. I won't go over my usual presentation because most of that's been discussed, but I wanted to hit on a few items. The other two special permits that were approved, the Heat Dirks Farm down by Firth, that was approved about a year ago, and I think somebody did mention that was for 90,000 chickens, and that is accurate. That's what that one was approved for. The Bevins Broilers, the one south of Waverly, while it was a, had been a turkey operation for quite some years, this application that was done in 2014 was to expand their operation to add chickens, broiler chickens to the operation and expand the area of the operation. And their expansion was for 138,000 chickens and 117,000 turkeys. There's also some mention about the road network and the condition of roads. This application was sent to the county engineers department as well as to Lancaster County Health Department and NDEQ for their review. We do have representatives here that will speak after I'm done. Any, on the roads specifically, the county engineer's review was, they did not object to it. Their only statement was that the truck traffic would have to go west on Whitstruck Road because of the sharp curve just next to the, just a little bit east of the entrance drive into this property. There was another, I think somebody mentioned about a nutrient management plan that is one, that has been put on and added as a condition that, in the staff report, as one of the conditions of approval. See, it does say as part of occupying the buildings, the permittee shall maintain an approved nutrient management plan by the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality. So that, that plan would have to be approved by NDEQ for this special permit to be approved.
So then, so just to clarify, because of those conditions are in place, if we approve the application, that's the condition that they fulfill, which is they have to get the permit from NDEQ?
Right. The approval is based on the conditions that are in the staff report.
And I'm assuming someone's here from NDEQ?
Yes.
Okay.
A couple other conditions, because distance was brought up from houses, we do have a distant condition that said, any of the barns or the compost shed must be a quarter mile away from any existing house. And, so those are the two, two conditions I wanted to go over. And I'll answer any questions the board might have at this time.
Commissioner Frankman?
So you mentioned the information that you received from the engineering department. Can you talk about why use of West Whitstruck, going west, is not included as a condition in the permit?
Didn't put that as a condition because I believe that's, the county engineer can enforce that.
Oh.
I think, I think.
Separate from the special permit?
I believe so. We do have, I think Pam's here.
Yeah.
I think Pam Dingman's here.
Well, I mean, I would assume that, because I mean, I've driven the road, I drove it last night and I drove it before, because we talk about it frequently at the RTSD, that it just has a practicality, no truck is going to be able to navigate.
Correct.
Either curve.
Right.
So Pam, I don't know if you want to come up and, or you want to wait to address that?
Let me ask one more question, one of Toms here. In addition to the approvals that the operator needs to get from DEQ, they also have to have approval from the NRD for the water wells, right?
Yes.
And then they will have to provide ongoing compliance with our air pollution resolution, yes? So those are additional?
Right. And Chris from Lincoln Lancaster County Health can address more of the, what they review and as far as odor, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for, for Tom? Okay. Pam, you want to come up and address, or quick, address the?
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony we're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. So as far as we know, we don't have any way to enforce these unless they're written in the special permit. That is why we try to do that. So it was our intent when we commented that this become a condition of the special permit, that the trucks enter and exit only through the west. In addition to that, we did comment that should the truck traffic dramatically increase for any reason, that we reserve the right to require a road maintenance agreement.
Commissioner Frankman?
How do you determine what a dramatic increase in truck traffic would be?
Well, that's a good question.
That's the language we're going to use.
So, you know, we haven't really put a solid on that, and what I would say is if we got to, to the point where we had 50 trucks a day coming in and out of this facility, then we would like to look at a maintenance agreement.
And then, I guess, can you comment about the, I know you were given a copy of the report that was presented. I would assume that you have looked it over and can, I guess, provide some feedback on it?
Well, actually, I really don't want to give a professional opinion on what was submitted here because I have no way to verify it, and I only have portions of whatever the full engineering report was that was generated for this. What I will say is that.
Okay, so we have a report that was done on our county road that you weren't involved in?
I was not involved in this report in any way, and that's what I would like to talk about.
Okay.
And so what I will say is, I'm, I'm a little disturbed by the report because we were not contacted for work being done in our, in our right of way. We do have a permitting system for that, and I really want to make sure that the public knows that we highly discourage people from doing work in our right of way and doing things to our roads without our knowledge. And we want to make sure the public is safe when they're out there, and we want to make sure all activities in our right of way are appropriately coordinated through our office. And so I have not looked at the details of this report. I have not gone out and take, taken road measurements here. We do have 1,100 miles of gravel road in Lancaster County. I was asked if we, you know, I don't geotechnically test any of the gravel roads at this time, and we simply don't have the funding to do that.
Pam, any questions, Commissioner Short?
Do we have road maintenance agreements in place now, other than, it seems like a borrow pit, maybe we have one? Or do we have any existing at this time?
Yeah, we have, we have a maintenance agreement with one of the borrow pits right now. You know, they do have to be warded somewhat carefully because what happens is, you talk about truck traffic from a certain address, and at times you have neighbors assume that that is, becomes any truck traffic. And of course, we can't make an operator of a facility be responsible for all truck traffic on the road, only their truck traffic. And then sometimes the maintenance agreements have been difficult to enforce when it comes to dust. And I'll give the example, so that doesn't mean that if there's dust on the road, that an operator of a certain facility is responsible for all dust. They're responsible for dust created by their operation. I'll be honest and tell you that the maintenance agreements on occasion are difficult in our office because if we get a group of people that really don't want an operation going on, I had an example, this a couple weeks ago, where someone called in and complained about mud, the road being muddy, and then they said, oh yeah, and it's dusty too. And I said, well, is the road muddy or dusty? And so it's, it becomes difficult to sort out.
Any other questions? Okay. Thanks.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony we're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Good afternoon, Chris Schroder with the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. I would like to walk through some areas of concern that have been identified relative to air pollution and water pollution. Starting off, fugitive dust, our department has the authority to regulate fugitive dust through our Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Program Regulation and Standards. I know it's a mouthful there. But this, this relates to, so visible dust crossing the property line, so in the course of activities on the property, so this doesn't pertain to county roads. So interior hall roads, trucks traveling on these, if they're creating excess dust, we get a complaint, we go out and inspect, and if we see visible dust crossing the property line, that would be a violation of these regulations. Another example would be if they're cleaning out the barns, apparently that happens once a year, and, or if they're, you know, doing the wind drilling, et cetera, and we get dust complaints, again, we'd go out and investigate that and see if there's any, any visible dust crossing the property line. Air quality permitting has also been, been mentioned. Right now, there aren't any specific air regulations relative to confined feeding operations. However, our department does have the authority under our air regulations to issue construction and air quality operating permits. So we had our air quality program staff, you know, use the best information available and, and look at what we call the maximum potential to emit certain pollution from this operation that'd be relative for a construction permit, and they determined that it doesn't meet those thresholds, so a construction permit would not be required or an air quality operating permit. With that said, the EPA did commission fairly large air quality monitoring project that looked at, tried to actual measure emissions from confined animal feeding operations. The results of those are supposed to be released in 2020. When that happens, that would help better inform our air quality permitting process, so that would hopefully provide actual emission factors. So say, for example, for ammonia, particulate matter, hydrogen sulfide, some of the main pollutants associated with these operations. Odor, of course, has been at the forefront of this proposed facility under our county air pollution control resolution. It does address odor emissions from these facilities. However, I think there's been some confusion because there's actually four items where if it's one of these four, then it is not a violation of the county resolution, and I'll just quickly read these. So if the owner-operator has employed all reasonable techniques to minimize odor, it's considered not a violation. If the operation is in compliance with all applicable regulations adopted by the state and zoning of the county, it's considered not a violation. If the complaint is filed by a person other than a person in lawful possession of land, so if a renter files a complaint, it would not be considered a violation. And then also, if essentially the complaint is filed by somebody that actually moved to the nuisance, so if someone moves in next door after, after the facility is built, then it would be considered not a violation. Now, relative to the first.
Just real quick.
Sure.
But that's only with regard to the odor, right? Or is that?
Right.
Universal?
To the odor.
Just the odor?
Yes. But for the first item that talks about.
Chris.
Sure.
Commissioner Short?
Number two, the one that said if you are adhering to all existing regulations.
Right.
It isn't a violation.
Right.
And didn't I just hear you say that we aren't expecting federal regulations until 2020?
Well, what they're talking about is, is releasing a study that will have actually emission factors, and then therefore the EPA could look at adopting regulations for these facilities. But at such time, there aren't any specific regulations for these facilities. So yes, so in the future, if those emission factors come out, we review those and determine they do need an operating permit, then yes, our department would have to issue that, they would have to comply with all the requirements within an operating permit.
But if you are already in existence, there would be a grandfather clause? I mean, wouldn't it be at some point in time moving forward, or you can go back and?
They would still be subject to the operating permit requirements.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Frankman?
While we're asking questions about the exceptions, can you talk about how you determine what reasonable techniques are?
Sure. So if, if we would get a complaint on the odor, I know the nutrient management plan has been talked a lot about, and I think the NDEQ is going to expand upon that and explain it better. But we would contact the NDEQ and work closely with them and ask that they conduct an inspection of the facility to determine if they are in compliance with the nutrient management plan. And if they are not, then we could then work with the county attorney and potentially pursue enforcement action under the county resolution. So.
Any other questions about the air quality? Go ahead, I guess, continue, Chris.
Okay, sure. Microbial air pollution, this item of concern is one of the more difficult to assess. So this relates, especially these type of operations, you know, bacterial air pollution affecting downwind populations. We looked at several professional papers, including the John Hopkins paper, and what we found is that, yes, these papers did show that there is downwind microbial deposition, but what makes it difficult is that there aren't any ambient air quality standards for microbial air pollution. So like we have for our, our air quality regulations, we've got ambient air quality standards for particulate matter, you know, nitrogen oxide, sulfur oxides, I know that was mentioned, the MPPD power plant was mentioned earlier, you know, they are in compliance with those ambient quality standards. So that makes it difficult to assess potential, you know, health effects. Could there be? Yes. One thing, when you look at the studies and they, they've done the air sampling, the, what they call the colony forming units, it's how they are sampling how much bacteria is in the air, essentially. And when you look at that data, as you go downwind, the levels drop exponentially. I mean, at 500 meters, they're 1,300 times less, the levels in the air. But again, there isn't a standard, a health, public health-based standard to look at. The other studies we looked at, they're focused on occupational health-type exposures. And so when you look at those, yes, is there negative respiratory outcomes for workers? You know, yes, there is. And of course, they're, they're still working on looking at, trying to do studies for, relative to affecting the public's health. On to water pollution, relative to groundwater, our department, we regulate the construction of water wells within the city limits of Lincoln and the Three Mile Limit, so this is outside of that, so we don't have any jurisdiction over the construction of these water wells. It's been talked about that the, the NRD requires construction permits for wells over 50 gallons per minute, so then, you know, they would need to work with the NRD on that. I know Planning received a letter from the NRD trying to add some clarification to that process, and the main point being is that they've got a setback requirement to domestic water wells. I think it's 600 feet. I think the letter indicated that if they meet that setback and they fill out the application out, that typically they do issue those construction, those water well construction permits. And the other document you received from the NRD, they talk about the potential for groundwater contamination, and, and due to the soil types and the depth of groundwater, they said the risk is minimal for groundwater contamination. And then again, getting back to the nutrient management plan, so that will address the, you know, the land application of the compost, there would actually be more oversight for the application of the compost versus the application of anhydrous ammonia. So that would help, you know, regulate the actual application rates on the compost, so that should help further reduce the risk to groundwater contamination. Surface water, you know, is, is the same, the risk there is the overapplication of, of the compost and then heavy rains, you know, causing, you know, runoff to affect nearby waterways. And I guess in, in closing, you know, we maintain that after reviewing, you know, all the submitted material, several scientific studies, literature, that, you know, the risk to the public health is, is minimal with this proposed facility. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Schroder? Commissioner Short?
We heard a lot about flies. Did your, any of your investigative research bring up any health concerns with regards to how far flies can fly and the rodents that were mentioned as well?
Sure. The, the ones that I remember reading talked about dry litter facilities having less, less of a problem with flies because they are, again, a dry litter, not, they should have a less breeding potential for flies. And of course, you know, I'm not sure how far flies they can fly, but of course, there's the potential for them to transmit disease along with rodents as well. So it sounds like the applicant did talk to pest control, that would definitely be supported.
Any other questions for Mr. Schroder? Okay. Thank you. Who's, who's next?
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony we're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Steve Goins, I'm the Deputy Director for the Department of Environmental Quality, and I have the Water Division in my group, which includes Agriculture. We're responsible for administering the National Pluton Discharge Elimination System permitting, which is MBDS, and the state permitting and operating permits that we have for livestock facilities. Ben Miller is here with me today. He is the supervisor for the Compliance and Permitting Section, and he'll be able to answer a lot of details for you. We just handed out some packets which have some information we'll go over a little bit as we go through the documents. You'll find some guidance materials we prepared for the poultry industry to better understand the department's expectations under environmental regulations. Have also included an example permit from another facility very similar to the one that we understand is there. Consider if you're here. Whenever a new facility wants to come in, what they have to do, an animal feeding operation located in Nebraska, they're required to submit a Form A, which is in the packet as well, and request an initial inspection. We send an inspector out for that initial inspection to look at the facility, see, talk to the owner and determine where things are going to go and how it's going to impact, how their facility is going to set up, what water or other features are around that we need to look at for further permitting. So we take a look at that, and then we determine, after initial inspection, we normally send a letter to a producer telling them whether they need a permit or not. And in this packet that you have, you'll see that Mr. Essex received an initial letter saying that they are not required to have a permit. The reason they're not required to have a permit is their facility does not have waste control facilities that would expose the waste to runoff, so we don't have a permit requirement for this facility. But under this requirement, Costco, Lincoln Premium Poultry, has asked that all their facilities be permitted. And so we are issuing permits to these facilities under our state construction and operating permits. And so far, Ben, how many do we have?
We have issued 11 permits so far. We have seven applications pending.
Can you move the microphone over?
I can. Sorry, me to repeat that?
Yeah.
We've issued 11 permits so far, and there are seven applications currently pending.
So while a request is voluntary, while we have these permits, we enforce them just like we would if it was a required permit. So all the conditions and everything in the permit are enforced by the department. So as we go through, we issue the permit, we ask that the applicants submit a Form B, which is an example of a Form B in your packet as well, and we have that, we go through and look and see how everything's going to be built, exactly where it's going to be, how they're going to manage documents. Form B is received in our department, it's available to the public within a few days in our electronic system, which is online, all of our documents are available. And then it's passed immediately to the NRD, I think, and the county board, so you'll get a copy of that as well to look at and review. Then our department, our team effort for our review, we'd have the inspector look over the application, see if there's anything there that's different from what they saw at the site. We would have our engineers take a look at that facility and make sure that the design was appropriate for any engineering requirements that are there. And we will also have our agronomists look at the facility and determine whether there's adequate nutrient management for the facility, for the waste that's generated from the facility. I would also say that for a lot of the facilities, the ones that we issue permits to, they're actually regulated for nutrient management compared to those that do not have permits. There is no requirement on any that doesn't have a livestock permit. There is no requirement on any that doesn't have a livestock permit for limiting the amount of nitrogen or other materials they use in growing their crops. So this is actually would, the nutrient management plan is a step in, so would restrict that to some extent potentially.
I think Commissioner Avery has a question.
Yes. I think I heard you right. You said that these are not requirements. They are voluntary.
So they voluntarily requested a permit for their facility. They are not required to have a permit according to the laws and regulations that we have. But since they voluntarily requested a permit and we are issuing a permit to them, all those, they are treated just like we have a permit.
So what happens to those who choose not to voluntarily submit?
They would receive a letter saying they do not need a permit from the department.
That's crazy.
Yeah. And that's because their waste is not exposed to runoff.
Right. The current regulations come down to discharge potential. So a solid waste facility, dry litter barns would, especially covered, under roof would be extremely minimal discharge potential if managed appropriately.
Well, we've been listening to testimony here all day, some of which says that runoff is an issue for this particular application that we're talking about. That would mean nitrates in the streams, right?
You're concerned with nitrates and phosphorus. And under the Clean Water Act, that once the material is land applied, and it's the same thing whether you're using anhydrous or manure or any of the other fertilizers, once it's applied, it's a farming use and it is exempt from the Clean Water Act.
Well, but I think the point is, is that, that, it's my understanding that because this applicant has voluntarily subjected themselves to the NDQ permit.
Right.
And that we are going to, if we do approve, make that a condition.
Right.
Then moving forward, you would have the ability to enforce that conditions of that permit. And that at no time while they operate can they terminate that permit.
We have not terminated permits that we've issued that I can think of, no.
That's correct. The state construction operating permit never expires and they would be required to follow any terms and conditions in that permit like anybody who was required to have the permit. That's correct.
But don't we want our rules to be long lasting in perpetuity is what I would argue, rather than to say, well, this guy didn't request an application, so he's exempt?
Well, one thing is part of one of our rules that we have in is no matter which size facility it really comes down to, while we regulate certain sizes of facilities or the potential, you are not allowed to let your livestock waste runoff into the stream directly from your operation. I mean, if you have a confined, you know, a feedlot that you have cattle in, it's not allowed to run into the stream out of the feedlot. You're not allowed to overtop a lagoon. Any of those would be direct violations whether you had a permit or not.
That's not what we're talking about in this situation because we're talking about a dry litter. It's because the likely, that the actual site that we're talking about, the facility that we're permitting, there would be no discharge.
That's correct.
And so, but really where the concern from the potential effect would be on the application of the, and that's subject to the nutrient management program or plan.
That's correct.
The nutrient management plan has the requirements for the land application, how much they can apply, setbacks to streams and other requirements that are there to try and minimize any of those materials leaving the site.
Wrong one.
Am I actually, is this what I heard, what, if what I heard, well, please confirm if I heard was correct, okay? That actually the application of the dry litter compost, that particular application is more stringently monitored than is anhydrous ammonia?
That would be only the case in combi- anhydrous ammonia is a chemical that is not a animal waste. So any animal waste that has a nutrient management plan, all those things, not only do we look at the manure that's applied, we look at the, any other nutrients that are applied as well as part of the combination. And we take all that into account when we do our calculations for the necessary amount of nutrients to grow the crop on the property. And so they are restricted. There are no restrictions if you would have just a corn crop or a facility that didn't need a permit. We have no restrictions on the amount of anhydrous that they would put on a facility.
So the nutrient management plan that is subject to the NDQ permit, I mean, that's something that you'll be able to enforce?
Yes.
And so moving forward, and I guess to Commissioner Avery's point, in, in this case, the application, it would be in perpetuity. And that in the future, it doesn't matter who the applicant contracts with, any future application, whether it be the current ones proposed or any other future, that would be, again, a review, it would, of that application plan, or I guess modification, would be reviewed by NDQ.
Right.
That's correct.
And that would transfer with the?
Yes.
With the facility, is that right?
Yeah, there's a, a transfer, a permit transfer form, basically, if a new owner would potentially come in at some time, yes, the permit would need to be transferred.
Is he required to do that? Is he required to go in and request renewal?
If there is an existing permit, yes.
And I think that's the confusion is that this applicant would be subjected to that because they've voluntarily submitted and requested a permit. But another operation like the others that we have operating the county.
Correct.
May not have that. And I, yeah.
Right. In fact, they do not.
I know, I suspected that. Okay. The other?
I just have a little bit more, which is part of our review process. We also do a groundwater review of the site and the surrounding impact. So our groundwater section will review all of the potential impacts to groundwater in the area as well. So at the end of the comment period, once we get a permit, we prepare it, we issue a notice to issue the permit or an issue to deny the permit. We take, we public notice that and we take public comment on that permit. And then we'll decide which action we're going to take and either issue or deny the permit.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Schroer?
Ben, I want to go back to what you said about 11 have been approved and seven are pending.
That's correct. These are the, the poultry operations that have requested permits, yes.
From Lincoln Premium Poultry?
Correct.
What types of concerns have been raised in those 11 applications that have been operating?
Really, there haven't been many concerns at all. We have come back and there've been some changes to the barn design in a few of the applications that have come in. And so we've asked for some clarification on exactly how many barns are going to be there, where they're going to be located, that type of thing. But as far as the nutrient management plan, how many acres are needed in order to appropriately apply the waste that are generated, we haven't seen many concerns at all on that front.
Anything on the mortality sheds that seem to be an area?
No, the regulations that we have to work with as far as mortality goes are pretty generic. Basically, it needs to, to not discharge. And so this regulation speaks specifically to having a berm placed around the facility. Can't be located closer than 100 feet to a waterway. But it's not specific as far as saying it needs to have a roof covering it. So this proposal would, would go above and beyond any of the requirements that we would have for protecting that compost area, stockpile area.
One more question. One more question. I'm a city girl, so this question, when you talk about application of nutrients, when the ground is frozen, and this is a, you know, 365 day operation.
Right.
What happens?
Yep. So the only actual prohibition in the regulations for application on frozen ground is if there is a high phosphorus content in that existing field. So we require that they do field testing before application and they need to apply, it's what called, what's called agronomic rate. So they need to make sure that the, the nutrients that are applied will be used by the crop there. So the only prohibition for applying to frozen ground is that it not be done if there is a, what we call a high IP index rating on that field. And we would have that information as part of the nutrient management plan submittal. And we would hold them to that requirement if that, a field is indeed high in that phosphorus content.
And they're adhering to these regulations voluntarily?
Well, they're, they're part of the, the requirement. So not, I mean, they're asking for the permit voluntarily, yes. But once they have the permit, they will be held to that standard.
Phosphorus testing, okay.
And one other answer to a question from earlier too, we have currently 91 active poultry facilities in the state. So.
The state?
In the state. And these would be the only poultry facilities that have permits through the department.
And so the, have there been any issues with the 91?
There's one case where there's a, it's a, it's an egg laying facility, so they actually break eggs. There's a whole industrial process that goes along with the actual animal feeding operation. And so there's a lagoon associated with that, and that lagoon is permitted under our wastewater regulations. So it's not really permitted through the animal feeding operation regulations. And it's more for the industrial side of the operation, not the animal waste that's being produced. The animal waste being produced at that facility is actually a dry, dry material.
Okay, so that's a layer facility.
That's correct.
And so it's the, when the, I guess the eggs need to be?
Yep. So there's eggshells that go in there, yes.
Yeah.
And part of the cooling process and a whole, a whole bunch of industrial work that goes along with that.
Okay.
Yep.
Commissioner Avery?
I assume both of you are professionals in this field of regulation with the kind of issues we've been talking about. What is your professional opinion about the state of regulations in Nebraska? I know this is not going to be easy for you. And where would you recommend changes? If we're going to be dealing with the option at least of maybe not taking action right away and, and going for new rules, or there are new rules now, basically devising some rules. What do you, what is your, what is your assessment? And we need guidance on where to go and how to get there.
Sure.
This is a tough question to answer. The, you know, we, as a state agency, respond to what our legislature has tasked us with doing. And we do the best we can to make sure that we take care of our environment. We have in conversations with some of the facilities, we do recommend that they take extra steps. And I think one of the things that we have been telling a lot of these type of dry litter facilities and others is it's probably a good thing if you just get a roof over your compost piles and stuff. And while we can't require that, that we have seen that this facilities are trying to comply with that request. It was not a requirement of our regulations or anything else. So we do our best to see where things are to help prevent runoff and contamination. You know, there was, we, we spend a lot of time, it takes a lot of time to work with the public and get them educated and get them to understand where we're at and what impacts them as we continue as Senator, you know, as we go through. We've been working, listening to our constituents. We've been working with a lot of our CAFO operations up in the Northeast recently who have a lot of medium operations and educating them about making sure that they don't have runoff and how we can better have best management practices. So we've been using an education technique really on a lot of these things that you're asking about.
But you could use new rules.
So far, I think the rules we have have been effective. It's just getting those that are, we're slowly gathering those who are still having some runoff issues and other problems into the fold of the regulations. We're making a difference.
But that's still voluntary, right?
Not if they're running off. It's not. That becomes then a permit issue. If you discharge, it's a permit issue.
This is a great example, folks, of your government at work. And frankly, it doesn't make sense to me that we have need, you, you need to do something in five or 10 different areas. And, and you say, yes, we want to do this and we're going to do it, but it's going to be voluntary. Makes sense.
Well, I guess just to wrap that up, but in this case, the specific case, we have a applicant who voluntarily subjected themselves to the permit. So there will be oversight, there will be regulations that they will be required to comply with. And that are the conditions of the nutrient management plan, as well as the other issues that go along with the permitting process.
Yes.
Right. So even though, you know, we can talk about the, the system as a whole, as Commissioner Avery kind of alluded to, we're really need to focus on this specific application. And that that's, you know, they will be covered by NDQ.
But this raises a question for me. If, if we decide that we want to write some rules for Lancaster County that have implications for other counties, that wouldn't be a bad thing.
Part of the reason that we send it to the county boards is that is a local issue for a lot of those things. And they need to have the ability to know what's going on and make sure that they take appropriate actions as they see fit, yes.
Any other questions for the NDQ staff?
I'm, I come from a background where if it doesn't make sense, it doesn't matter if it's the law.
It's the law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name's Steve Martin. I'm with Nebraska Department of Agriculture. And here today to answer just a couple of questions or maybe comment a little bit on two things, the livestock sighting matrix, which is under the Department of Agriculture. And then also composting of mortalities, which is also, we have regulations under the Department of Agriculture for that too. Just a, a brief, a brief background on the sighting matrix, it was created by the legislature in 2015. Through 2016, we created the regulations, the committee, which was made up of the university, county boards, county zoning administrators. We had a couple of producers, we had some ag organizations and businesses on that panel too. They came up with the, the matrix, which I believe you've seen the Essex scoring on that. And that is a, a process that we were given to create, that was the law. But the next part of that was as a voluntary tool for counties to use, or anybody to use really. And the surprising thing about that is that as this has gone on for about a year and a half now, almost two years, the people that are using it are livestock producers as a way to show what they're doing on their operation, create some transparency in what they're proposing to do, and just give those, those details so that county boards, the county zoning people have a little more clarity in making a decision on their project. It's not something that we review when an applicant or a county uses it. We are not behind there, double checking their numbers. That's for the county to do. But it's a, it's a worksheet for them to, to use on their own. I think the, the biggest takeaway on that is as we've seen a couple of counties adopt it, Dodge it, Dodge County, Merrick County, and Hall County have all adopted the matrix as part of their application process. It is not their entire process, which was one of the flexibilities that the legislature provided, is that counties can adopt this to use as they see fit. One of the, one of the sections, section C, that's the county, meeting county regulations. The first box there is meeting county setback distances or other county regulations. Then there's two through seven, which is what I would call an alternate means to meet those criteria. So if there's a neighbor that's too close to you based on county setback distances, then you can use the steps two through seven to score some of those points back in that and then continue to move through the process. Now, if there's too many neighbors that are too close, you're going to end up being down so many negative points you can never make it up, and obviously, it's not going to work for you in that location. Hall County, when they adopted this, they took out sections two through seven, they just said, you meet our setback distances or you don't move on, and that's it. So that, that flexibility is a nice part of that tool, very beneficial to county boards and decision-making, and, and also for producers as they look at what they want to do, if they can see, I'm not going to score enough points, I can save myself a lot of time and not pursue this through county hearings, through DEQ approvals, I know upfront what I need to do different. So that's kind of the matrix, I don't know if there's any questions on that, I guess there is. In that section C, it references a setback distance that's developed by the matrix committee, and at one of the hearings, I know that was kind of thrown out that that's state law, but I just wanted to clarify that it's not state law. Counties set their setback distances if they choose, and the guidance that's in the matrix packet is simply that, it's guidance for somebody to use.
Any questions about the matrix?
Okay, then just touching briefly on composting. The Department of Ag does have regulations over composting mortalities. There's four accepted processes of dealing with dead animals in the state, rendering, burial, which includes burial and landfills, incinerating, or composting. For poultry and the poultry industry, composting is a best management practice. It limits the number of trucks that are coming onto your farm, if you have rendering, that's another truck coming on, potential to transmit diseases. In, the university has also done a lot of research and study, practical study on composting, everything from baby pigs up to horses, and it's very effective, it does what it's supposed to do, it gets rid of the animal, it mineralizes the bones, some of the big bones may still be there at the end of a composting process, but the minerals have been leached out of them, and that's part of what we looked at is of what it means to be fully composted. So, and one of their, and I was trying to find a comparable today, but one of their studies, a three-pound baby pig is completely, was completely composted in two weeks. And I know when we did the avian influenza response a couple of years ago, those were large piles of, of chickens and big piles of wood chips, after about a week or so, there was not much left of, of any of those chickens. So it's a very effective means of disposing of mortalities, and when, when you look at that shed that they have, a couple of the regulations that we have in place prevent runoff, so that's what the roof structure is going to do, that's what that birmingham concrete around that is going to do, prevent scavenging by wild animals, that's something that they're required to do, and also limiting vectors, and vectors are the flies and the mice, and, and we heard them talk about how they were going to have rodent control and, and pest control services on the site, so that should meet our requirements.
So, can you, you mentioned it about the scavengers, and you said that the berms would somehow mitigate that?
No, just runoff. The berms would run, mitigate runoff.
Okay, so what's, I mean, is it, because we've heard a lot about, you know, rodents, insect, I mean, obviously, you know, some insects during the composting process, I mean, that's natural. Anytime you have carbon decomposing, you're going to have, yeah, some type of, of insect involved. Can you kind of speak to that a little bit?
Well, not very well. I, I know that from a practical standpoint, is those compost piles are hot when they're working, and if you're adding to those every day, you shouldn't see a lot of insects in those, it's just too hot for them.
Because they're composting, it's different than if they were left out and put in a, I mean, whatever pasture, left out for the elements, but because they're put in a mortality shed with compost, the, the process that they're in, whatever you call it, ingestion or whatever, I forget what the term is, but anyway, that, that will mitigate the insects.
Right.
Okay. And then as far as, is there like a best practice, I mean, is it, as far as limiting scavengers, like, we talked about coyotes and other rodents, vermin, whatever?
Yeah, a, a little bit's going to depend on location and what those pests are, you know, if they're going to be living right there, that's going to help, depending on proximity, fencing would be another thing that might be an option. It really, it's going to depend on their particular site, what they're going to do to limit that scavenging. So that'd be something that they'll have to put in place as they, as they design and build it.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to come up and finish. Did anyone have any final questions for, for Tom? Commissioner?
There was a reference earlier to, I believe, Saline County that had eleven pages of reference, references regarding to operations such as this, and another county that had two or eight, I don't remember, that was a while ago, and that we had one paragraph. This is the first, when we cited Firth, there was no public testimony, I mean, no controversial testimony. So to...
There, there was.
Firth?
Yeah.
The, the one in Firth, Heat Dirks Farm, did have three, maybe, well, they had an attorney representing a, a group of homeowners, three or four homeowners, that did testify a planning commission in opposition.
Okay, thank you, thank you for correcting me. So, in looking at the response today, to me, the issue is not about whether or not we're, you know, pro poultry or pro agriculture, it's more of a sighting issue.
See, yeah.
And so that would be something that we could address in future zoning regulations?
Yes.
And I would just, I guess, point out that, I know we mentioned the, some of the other counties, one of them was Saline, they're a livestock-friendly designated county, so I think they've already adopted a process that actually circumvents the planning and the county board. Don't they just, I mean, unless they meet the conditions of the regulations, they can...
I did look at Saline County, I also looked at Gage and Saunders and a couple others. They all have regulations related to confined feeding operations, CAFOs. I think you are correct, in Saline County, they have what's called kind of a conditional use, or we would refer to it that way, where if you meet certain conditions, and you can meet all these conditions set forth, you're, you're permitted without a public hearing. And I did, I did speak with the, excuse me, I did speak with the zoning administrator in, in Saline County, because I wanted to verify that I was reading that correctly, so. And all, all those counties have setback issues from houses. They go from a quarter mile, depending on which county, some, I seen a quarter mile was the nearest, and it went up to a half a mile, and some of them are different depending on how, what the size of the operation is too, the setback distance might be greater if, you know, depending on the number of animals that are, that are in the site.
Those, those counties where it would automatically be approved, is there a similar appeal process to the county board such as this today?
I didn't read that, I would assume so, but I didn't read that one. Saline County was the only one that I noticed had that.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Tom? Commissioner Brinkman?
I want to go back to the road issue. Would planning object if we inserted the engineering comments related to utilizing the west on Witstruck or the potential for a road maintenance agreement at a certain level of ADT?
I don't think we'd have any objection, I, like, I don't see why anybody driving a semi truck would even try to go east on Witstruck Road, so.
Well, and we've talked a lot at the planning, not planning, sorry, the Railroad Transportation Safety District, that we've had conversations about making improvements to that rail crossing. So if we do require, I guess, I guess, traffic to go west, if that's part of a condition, I would point out that there'd be allowed some future potential for improvements to that rail crossing that may make it to where a truck could drive east. Because if, I mean, I, I know that, I mean, that if we straighten out the alignment, you know, a truck, truck traffic may utilize it. Am I wrong?
No, you're correct, it's a very expensive improvement, extremely expensive.
Right, and that's one of the barriers, but if we were to sometime in the future choose to do that, I think we need to make sure that if any restrictions we have could take that into consideration.
And I'd also like to point out that, you know, I don't know exactly what the weight of a semi is in comparison with some of the very large farming equipment that goes across that road, I'm sure, as well as some of the truck, truck traffic, you know, hauling grain, I mean, that's also a consideration too. And so I think that, you know, dealing with the transfer of the poultry and the feed from the CAFO, I mean, that's also very similar to what's happening in terms of the farming equipment that's crossing it too.
Okay, any other questions, comments for Tom? Okay, thanks. Anyone, I think that concludes the testimony in the neutral capacity. Now, we will hear a rebuttal from the applicant, if you want to come forward.
We'll come up and go through the technical aspects.
Isn't Randy answering the applicant?
He's going to be coming up after we go through the technical details.
Yes, please proceed.
I think I'm going to turn it over to Andy to start to go through the specifics related to nutrient management and to answer some of those questions that you raised during DEQ's conversation.
Are we limited on time on this?
At this point, because we're going to have, I think, a lot of questions.
Okay, super. Again, Andy Schulting with Nutrient Advisors out of West Point. I guess first and foremost, I, I've just been taking notes as, as we heard some of the concerns of the opposition, and I've got a few points that I just want to make sure that we clarify and, and offer you the opportunity to ask the technical questions to clarify some of these questions that, that have been gray. One that I definitely want to address is the odor footprint tool. It was called into question about its legitimacy, a couple of the opponents simply said, we don't agree with what it says. It's a science-based tool, it is the best tool that we have available, it was developed right here in, in Lincoln, Nebraska, at the University of Nebraska, by Rick Stoll and his team, and it's proven to be a very quality tool for sighting livestock, and, and because of the lack of detail of, of, of some of the opposition, I, I want to just show how we arrive and what these calculations are. This is the calculation page of the odor footprint tool. You can see here it is specifically for broiler poultry production on floor-raised, floor-raised on litter. There's the capacity of the facility, the dimensions of the barn are taken into consideration. Here's the four houses that are taken into consideration. Local weather data, Beatrice, Nebraska is the closest station that we can use for this tool. Bottom line, I just want to point out that it is a legitimate tool, developed here locally, purposely for, for providing the best information that we can about what the impact to a neighborhood would be. This is the results page, and there's a lot of numbers here. One person talked about the fact that the map is round. Well, that's true. We try to represent this data the best we can to show an area of impact, and the area of impact is a sphere. The, the details show four directions, those are the directions that we have, northeast, south, and west. Each of these is a proposed distance of impact for this facility. At the ninety-four percent level, which is what we represented, point two-one miles to the north, point one-two miles to the east, point one-three miles to the south, point one-eight miles to the west. That's the tool that we have. It's science-based, you know, it's the best that we can represent, and that is the data. The other thing that I wanted to talk on is nutrient management, most of my information is going to be nutrient management, that's what we do, that is our wheelhouse. Our numbers were called into question about the, the pounds or the tons of litter that were produced. When I initially presented, I talked about the University of Tennessee numbers. I made a lot of phone calls to, to other universities, I talked to a Department of Ag person that had a ton of information from the, from the state of West Virginia. We did our research, and, and we found numbers that represented less tons and more tons, but as we talked to the industry and we talked to real growers, we, we developed that the University of Tennessee numbers are spot-on to what the industry is actually producing today under this type of management system. And so the, those are the numbers that we used. I want to talk about the process of implementing nutrient management. We talked all about the permit application, the DEQ representatives have done a great job of representing the process of permitting and what that's all about. I want to talk about the process of implementation, because there's question about, well, what is the difference between applying commercial fertilizers versus manure? Once Randy has this nutrient management plan approved by the Department of Environmental Quality, before he goes and applies a ton of litter anywhere, we will be required to have a phosphorus risk assessment completed prior to application of every single ton of litter. That takes into account soil type, soil slope, climate, production practices, tillage practices, and that will give us a, a score of what is the risk of phosphorus running off of that individual site. Then prior to every application, we will go out and take a minimum of twenty-four-inch deep soil samples. We analyze the top eight inches for all nutrients that are utilized for agronomic purposes will be required to analyze for nitrogen and phosphorus, and then from eight to twenty-four inches, we sample for nitrate only, because we want to see, is there any impact from these applications over time that is leaching only to a twenty-four-inch level? You know, because if we know if we've got nitrate in, in the next foot or the second foot, that we need to be concerned about pushing more down. Mr. Christian shared a map that showed about the nitrogen concentrations of a groundwater across the state, and I'll, I'll get to that in a minute. The, the runoff potential from the site, there was some concern or some confusion about what is required, when is a permit required? I, I like to think about this voluntary application to the operating permit like a driver's license. Nobody has to go apply for a driver's license, but if you do, if you have that license, you have to follow all the traffic laws, and you will be held accountable to those traffic laws. That's a great example of what this is from an environmental standpoint. This voluntary application subjects Randy and all the other poultry facilities and livestock across the state to those regulations that are mandated for certain types of production facilities. So I, I just thought that was a good analogy. I want to look at this nitrate map a little bit, and I know this is small, I could just pull it up on my phone, on the internet, and I know this is tiny for you to look at, but, but I think you can see it's the same map that was presented earlier, okay?
There's a zoom button.
Oh.
Look at that. Hi.
Great. Great, nice tool. All right. I'm a Nebraskan. I drink the water here. I've got a family. I've got five children of my own. I'm concerned about the water in Nebraska. We look at this map. We see high nitrates across our state. However, I work specifically, primarily with the livestock industry. And I know where the industry is. I know where my clients are. Let's look at the highest concentrations. It is no surprise to me why we see reds, why we see oranges, why we see yellows, why we see areas of green. This area up here, that's the Okorn Valley. And the further west you go, the sandier it gets. So when we're growing crops in areas that have shallow, light sandy soils, it's no surprise that we're going to have concentrations of nitrate. This is not a concentrated area of livestock in our state. Go down here, that's the Platt Valley. Again, we have shallow soils that are being used for crop production. Livestock is not aggressively being sighted in those river valleys. That is a long history of nitrogen applications to our crop production acres. We look at this green area here in the middle. You start here in Platt County and go west. That is very sandy soils. That is an area that leads right into the sand hills. It's no surprise that when we have soils with low organic matters and, and light physical properties that, that we see where nitrogen concentrations are in our groundwater. There's no question, anybody who knows anything about livestock in Nebraska, I think, can identify that Coming County is identified as one of the most concentrated areas of livestock production in our state. Their claim to fame is they've got more cattle on feed per acre than anywhere in the world. That is home for me. I live south of Wizard, Nebraska. I'm in the livestock industry. I serve that industry. That's why I live there. There's a lot of livestock there. That is this county right here on the map. The Okorn River goes right through that county, right through the middle, slices it in two, like a sandwich. And you'll see on that county there, there is no concentrated nitrate that's any different than any other county. And it's much, much less than these counties to the west or that are in our river valleys where we're applying commercial nitrogens on crop ag ground on shallow, light soils. It is a real concern for our state. But this poultry site and livestock in general is not the culprit of our nitrate problem in the state. I just want to make sure we all understand that. As a matter of fact, when we talk about solid manure application, we are looking primarily at organic nitrogen. There's two forms of nitrogen in manure. It's ammonia nitrogen and organic nitrogen. Ammonia nitrogen is, is very quick to become available to a crop, much like commercial fertilizers. Our liquid manure producers, dairies, hog manures, feedlot affluent, we know that the nitrogen in, in those products are readily available fairly quickly, and, and we manage those accordingly. When we look at organic nitrogen and solid manure, it takes two things to become plant available. And it's not leachable until it's plant available. It takes heat and moisture. And so I like to think of it as an IV. When we apply solid manure onto a field of corn, we have to wait for that to become available. It, it drips. It slowly supplies nitrogen to that growing corn crop when it's needed, because the corn grows again with heat and moisture. So it, it's a great fit. And, and it's a much more stable form of nitrogen than the ammonia nitrogen and other types of manure or our commercial fertilizers. Back to the process of what we have to do. I talked about soil sampling. We then do a budget. That nutrient budget is just like a financial budget. We have to know what we have in the bank. That is our soil. We have to know what we're going to add. That is our income. And then we have to know what our crop's going to use. That's our expenses. And so before we even talk about what our income is, we determine what's in the bank. That's our soil. We put a budget together to determine what do we need. And then we add that based on our historic crop yield data, our, our crop plan, the crop that we're growing, and our proven yield history. And, and that's what we add. No more. We're, we're not allowed to under the parameters of this permit, specifically from a nitrogen standpoint. Commercial corn growers are not regulated i- in, in that way a- at all, unless they're in a groundwater management area, which is likely where the reds are on that map. So, so it's a much higher bar of nutrient management if we are under the parameters of Title 130 and our nutrient management guidelines in the state. A couple of quick stats on nutrient management. This entire project, the entire Lincoln Premium Costco project, i- if, if I do the math and figure the radius of impact, there's just under seven and a half million acres in the radius of, of this entire project. I figure a real number is about 80% tillable. Okay, we don't farm every acre. We don't farm Lincoln, Nebraska. But if we farm 80%, that leaves us with about 5.8 million acres of, of ground using nutrients. And when we think about nitrogen and phosphorus application, farmers are applying nitrogen and phosphorus every year. It takes nitrogen and phosphorus to grow crops. So if we don't have it available from livestock facility, we go to town and buy it, and we apply it. And economics regulate the applications of commercial fertilizers. Nobody goes to town and buys something and throws it out on their field that they don't need. As, as the price of fertilizer goes up, the more economics regulate itself. But when, when we look at the total impact, this whole project will supply enough phosphorus for right around 3% of the crops in that radius of impact. The entire project will generate enough available nitrogen for less than one-half of 1% of the nitrogen needed to grow corn and soybeans in the entire radius of this project. And soybeans don't use nitrogen. We don't apply nitrogen to soybeans. So that, that number is only figuring half the acres in a corn-soybean rotation. It's a minor, minor impact to the total agronomic picture of eastern Nebraska. And then lastly, I, I wanted to share something on a personal note. I've been doing this now since April. I've been representing producers, specifically poultry producers. I, I've been doing livestock permitting for close to 15 years. And never really before April of 2018 have I experienced the type of scrutiny, the, the type of outrage and public concern. And, and I see people getting up. I, I see you folks genuinely fearful. You know, they're, they're not coming up here with a bunch of crazy claim, I mean, they're, they're genuinely fearful for their health and their welfare. And I, as a Nebraskan, I, I, I share that. It's fear of the unknown. And, and so when I found myself up here presenting to groups like yours and, and realizing that I've been around livestock for a long time. I, I work on feedlots, which I will tell you are dustier and stinkier than any poultry facility I've been to. I decided I had to go. I had to go check it out. We got on a plane. My wife and I got on a plane. We went to Maryland, Delaware, Virginia. We rented a car, and we drove around, all around concentrated areas of broiler poultry production, integrated broiler poultry production, because I wanted to find out. My wheelhouse is nutrient management. It's not health. It's not air. We wanted to find out. What are we really dealing with? What is it that I'm representing here? And, and we went and found farmers. We went and found farms. We, we found places where there was 12 houses, 14 houses of broiler production right next to towns. We saw new restaurants being built right next to six and eight-house facilities. I, I was shocked. I mean, I, I expected to hopefully find not many problems. It, it blew me away. I mean, I, I saw healthy, prosperous communities with healthy people working and driving and walking all around, and it's just what they do. It's much like our beef industry here. It's, it's what we do. I, I know in one of the testimonies Walt shared, we, we were in a Colfax County meeting. And there was two facilities on an agenda. It was a 20,000-head feedyard and a 300,000-head poultry facility, which animal unit-wise, the, the feedyard is about 7X the size of the poultry facility. That feedyard got up and represented themselves. They're a client of ours as well. That hearing took five minutes. The, the poultry facility proceeded to take three hours. And that feedyard by the animals is 7X the size. So what I found, I, I got great peace of mind from, from what I saw, from the people that we talked to. We got boots on the ground on the farm. We stood right in front of the fans. I wanted to know. I, I wanted to smell it, feel it, see it. I, I wanted to experience what it is that, that I'm supporting, that I'm representing to you today, and I was so pleasantly surprised. I, it was hard to find anything to be concerned about whatsoever. The farmers are healthy. Their neighbors are healthy. I just didn't see any type of chronic concerns. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have of me.
Any questions?
Yes, I just want to clarify something. You were in West Virginia, places like that, and you saw a lot of activity that we arguing about here.
I saw a lot of concentrated broiler poultry production.
But you're not recommending that for us.
That's not a recommendation. I'm telling you what I saw. Be- because four months ago, I wasn't sure, if I heard these things, I wasn't absolutely sure that they weren't relevant. I hadn't seen it for myself. I, I wanted to go see. Is there a bunch of dust? Is there a bunch of feathers? Are people getting sick? I took my own tour. That, that's all I can tell you. I, I'm not giving you a, a recommendation for your county. I'm just simply telling you what I saw personally, and I was very pleasantly surprised.
A lot of testimony were heard today with that comment.
Actually, I'm, I'm resonating with the opposition because I understand it's genuine fear of the unknown. I understand that, and I went and saw it for myself.
And you came back with the opinion that it's no big deal.
I'm representing what I saw and experienced. That's all. That, that's all I can share with you.
Okay, Commissioner Short?
Do you want to share? Do you want to share any experiences that you've come, that have come up as a result of the 11 plants that are currently in operation?
I thought that was your perception when you were talking to DEQ. They're actually not in operation yet. There, there are none of the Lincoln Premium facilities in operation. They have active permits. So those, when, when Ben talked about permits, those are permits they've issued.
So we can place birds, but we just haven't done so yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dana?
Okay. You had some questions about PLT, and I just wanted to provide a little more information. This is information from the University of Auburn in Alabama A&amp;M. They did a study together. And in their study, in field tests using PLT, it was found that ammonia level, ammonia levels are decreased, pH levels are decreased, bacteria is reduced, and insect populations are lowered. That was shared with me by our veterinarian who we have on staff. I, I called him during the break. I also asked him about Xeolite. I believe that's what you referenced. He is actually at a meeting with five or six other veterinarians, and he immediately talked to them, because he had not heard of it. None of them had heard of it, so they went and they pulled out some research materials. And he came back and said, "It is a, a feed additive that has been used in the industry." His scholarly research indicated that most of the additive products that were available cease to be used after 2010. So it is not something that we have in our plans to use, but I did want to research that and try to get some information for you. Commissioner Short, you had referenced questions about the counties and, you know, the different processes that all the counties have in terms of setbacks and so forth. So we have been in front of, Andy and I, and our team have been in front of roughly 15 counties. What I can tell you is every single county in Nebraska that we have been in front of has been different. Their processes have been different. Their setback requirements have been different. The implement, the implication in their zoning has been treated differently. So let me give you an example. I live in Seward County. So in Seward County, if I go in with one of my growers, they look at the animal units. And they look at what is the animal units associated with this facility. And they determine the setback distance based on the animal units. Some of them have the ability that if they meet all the setbacks, but they're under a certain threshold, they are permitted by right. If, in other cases, if they meet all the setbacks but are over a certain threshold, they do go through a hearing. Generally speaking, our experience has been that in most counties, at least the ones we've been into this point, we go through a hearing at the Planning Commission level, and then we almost always go through a hearing at the County Commissioner level. This is the only county where that was not automatically required. So your process is different from the, the experience we've had in that way. I might also talk to you a little bit about the livestock friendly, because I think, Commissioner Welton, you raised that question about Celine County being livestock friendly. A county being livestock friendly does not automatically mean that they will cite livestock facilities in that county. What livestock friendly means is two things. One, they have done a thorough examination of and have adopted very specific rules related to the livestock sighting. So as an example, Seward County also just became livestock friendly. As part of that process, they had to submit to the Department of Agriculture to go through their process the specifics of what their rules were. So basically, what it does is it provides a, a grower or a, someone who wants to cite a livestock facility, it provides them certainty in what those rules are. Doesn't necessarily mean that they're easy or hard. It means that they are this, and this is where they are set. The second thing it does is it allows that county to advertise that they have gone through that process and have made a thorough commitment to look at livestock rules in their county and the sighting of those livestock. So then they get to designate themselves after they go through that process and are approved by the department. They then can become livestock friendly. So I did want to answer those questions about that. There have been quite a few mentions in the testimony about vertical integration. And I just want to say, I've been an advocate in this industry for around 20 years now. Agriculture in Nebraska does drive our state's economy, and during our original testimony, I did not point out that this project specifically is going to generate about a $1.2 billion economic impact in the state of Nebraska. That's why this project was recruited to the state. When there was references made to, "We chose to come here because we don't have enough, there aren't enough regulations in Nebraska." And I will tell you definitively, that is not the case. They chose to come here because they have availability of farmers, availability of workforce, availability of water, and availability of grain. And the deciding factor, the one that they reference the most, is the collaborative nature in which state government and local government worked to help them understand our processes and work through any challenges that arose. So that is why Costco chose Nebraska. They liked the people. They liked the attitudes. They liked having access to farmers. I will also mention that their investment, their capital investment is around $400 million. And if you add up all these growers collectively, so all the growers are going to grow for our, our project, their investment will be roughly $300 million. This is agriculture. There are different types of agriculture, and that's okay. But to say that because there's a vertically integrated system, that it's not agriculture is disingenuous. And that's how we're feeding the world today. Almost every poultry grower in the nation works with someone that is putting product out into the marketplace. There were health concerns raised. I am not a doctor, and I will not pretend to be, but I can tell you that many of our growers who have testified in other counties have children. And they have come to those hearings and have testified that they have met with their pediatricians, and their pediatricians have not expressed any concerns about their children being exposed to poultry. And in fact, in some cases, we have two mothers that talk about this a lot. They said, "Put those kids to work and get them into the barns." So we are not experiencing that there's been a net and negative response from the medical community in Nebraska. The speakers referenced concerns about the water quality. And I, I am really excited about this project and I'm proud to be a part of it, because we are going above and beyond in so many ways. Walt has referenced before his involvement with the poultry industry on the East Coast. And so when he first looked at this project in Nebraska, he was actually surprised at the level of regulation that was currently in place for poultry operations or livestock operations, which is why we have chosen as a company to voluntarily implement that. We think that it provides accountability. We think it's the right thing to do. And as a Nebraskan, I'm really proud of that. I had a state senator who represents you here in Lincoln ask me, "Jessica, aren't you concerned? If, you know, nitrates go up or phosphorus rates in these, in these waterways go up, aren't you concerned about that, that that'll reflect poorly on you?" Quite honestly, I'm not. Because what Andy explained is we're doing everything we could possibly do to make sure that we aren't part of that problem with accountability through the rules and regulations of Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality. I did want to mention again that the well permit does have to go through the NRD, so any concerns about water quantity will be handled there. And then one thing that I don't think we pointed out is that this entire parcel of land and where this is going to be is completely surrounded by trees. There's two ways to provide There's two ways to provide, uh, buffers, uh, in a natural sense. One is with setbacks, which is one of the reasons we do implement our own setback, if one doesn't exist in the county. And the other one is with a vegetative buffer. And the neat thing about this specific site, which is not something I've seen in every other one, is that that buffer already exists. So the entire area being surrounded by trees provides that natural buffer, and those trees are already full grown. Um, there were many references to children and grandchildren. I didn't share with you earlier that the main reason we're hearing of growers wanting to go into this industry and be partnering in this project with us is because they want the opportunity for their kids and grandkids to continue to work on the farm. Uh, we have typically, on any given day, a grandfather, a father, a mom, and a bunch of kids in our office. In fact, I joked that I need to bring some toys in, because, uh, we just see that, this is a family-oriented, family farming operation. Uh, there was references made to this process not being, um, fair, and, and I want to say, for, for our grower, he's had a lot of challenges with this process. We submitted our application as far back as May, uh, fourteenth. So, we have been in this process for a long time, he's had to miss a lot of work, and he's willing to do that because he believes in what he's doing, and he wants this opportunity for his family. Um, but as we continue to delay, it's been an increasing burden on him and his family. Uh, I want to reference the grower contracts. I can tell you another thing I'm very proud of in this project is we have one of the best contracts in the nation, if not the world. Uh, Costco had given us some very clear guidelines, and that was set the standard high and always do the right thing. And if you look at our grower contract and you compare it to typical industry contracts, time and time again, point by point going through it, we have taken out things that have been a concern in other parts of the country, and made sure that that wasn't a concern in our contract. Uh, there's always references in these hearings to the John Hopkins, uh, study. And I, I think that it is important to point out, on the very front of that study, there is a statement that says, "The opinions expressed herein are our own," meaning the author's own, "and do not necessarily reflect on the views of John Hopkins University." Um, regardless, we always want to point out, the four main concerns are occupational safety risks, which we have done a lot to change our, uh, plant and our facility, which is where those would most likely exist. In fact, we have completely eliminated, uh, some of the jobs that are typically done by humans, and we're implementing technology to do those jobs, in an effort to protect and provide the best environment for our workers. Um, air pollution from increased traffic. Uh, the traffic studies we have both for around the Fremont area, and then for this project generally, does not increase traffic to the degree that it should cause any pollution. Concern number three is exposure, uh, exposure of citizens to pathogens. I can tell you with our tran- and they specifically reference transport, that is why we are using these new ways of transport, because we want to make sure and be crystal clear that there isn't any exposure. And then four is the environmental impacts due to the water, um, runoff. And so we have, again, done everything we can to go above and beyond and exceed, um, expectations in that area as well. I have, uh, five farmers that you should have letters from, I just wanted to read them into the record. Dan Nurand of Dorchester, Lynn Steyer of Crete, Dave Nielsen of Raymond, Bill Bevins of Waverly, and Nathan Dorn of Wilbur. Um, as I shared, we have tried throughout this entire process to set the standard high and do the right thing. We've worked extraordinarily hard to improve every area of this industry that we're working on, to make this a positive experience, not just for our employees, but for our growers as well, and for the neighbors and communities that are around our operations. We've traveled all over the world to find the newest and greatest technology, and we've brought that technology back to Nebraska. In fact, our facilities will be a showplace, not just for Nebraska, not just for the United States, but for the entire world. And we expect to have visitors from all corners of the globe to come see our operation. We certainly appreciate the position you are in. Um, we ask that you do consider this seriously, and we would expect nothing less of you. Um, we understand you have to consider the health, safety, and character of the area, and the general welfare of the population. Uh, that is why there are abilities to put conditions on this permit. And I know that by doing so, you're able to address those things in that permit process. We want to give, um, a very generous shout out to all the staff and the state agencies that have been here to support this process and have provided a lot of technical information. They've all been professional and accessible and very responsive when we've had questions. At the end of the day, our grower has tried his very best to go above and beyond. He has voluntarily, uh, he's going to voluntarily apply for the DEQ permit, he's filled out the matrix, he's developed the odor footprint with Andy that we shared with you, and we're excited to have him as part of our project. Uh, he's committed to this, his family is committed to this, and this is a permitted use of his land. Uh, we support him, and we ask you to do the same through this application. I'd like to invite Randy up here to say some closing remarks. And then we can take, do you want me to take questions now? Or do you?
Well, Randy can come up first, I guess, yeah.
Again, my name's Randy Essink, and this is my fiancee Starla, she'd like to say a few things. She's from Waverly, Nebraska, and she's grew, uh, grew up around a lot of poultry farms, or a lot of poultry buildings.
Could you, could you give us your last name?
My last name is Skalak, S-K-A-L-A-K. Um, my parents moved out to Waverly, the community, in about nineteen years ago, so nineteen ninety-nine, September nineteen ninety-nine is when we moved out there. I was in fifth grade, so I lived out there about twelve years myself. Um, their address is one three four four one Jamestown Street, which puts them about two miles from the North Barns. Um, my mother is also an asthmatic, she has not, um-
Really quick, uh, Mr. Nolte, would we administer the oath? I think we forgot, I'm sorry.
Do you solemnly swear from the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My mother is also an asthmatic and has not, um, experienced any exacerbations since we have moved out there. Um, hers is mostly from cold and exercise induced. Um, it has also been brought up by the opposing, um, people that are here today, that, um, Waverly is not a comparable site to our proposed site, but it al- it does, in our opinion, have some similarities that we would like to point out. Um, at the last meeting before the Lancaster Planning Commission, we put into record a map that plotted out that almost the entire town of Waverly is engulfed within a two-mile radius of either the North Barns, the South Barns, or the plant itself. Um, it is also close to churches, schools, parks, the, um, Waverly Care Center. Um, the current population of Waverly is about thirty-six hundred people. Um, so it's impacting a larger population than our proposed site. Um, we also submitted into the record at the last meeting that the, the proposed growth of Waverly is moving in the direction of both the North and the South Barns. Um, so if it's such a, um, big health concern, why are we moving towards these barns? Why are we allowing Bevins to expand in two thousand fourteen? Also, um, I have visited the Waverly doc- or not doctor, sorry, excuse me, um, Mr. Bevins' site myself, my parents go to church with this individual. He has had several church events at his site. We do hay rack rides in close proximity to his barns, in, you know, around Halloween time. It's a family-friendly, people bring their kids. Um, I have a very keen sense of smell, as most of us all do. I wouldn't say that it's pungent and obnoxious, I mean, we were very close to, um, these barns. And, you know, it's an expectation, it's in our contract, that we live in close proximity on-site to these barns. So I'm just saying, as a member that is moving into the same community as these people that are expressing their concerns, you know, I'm, I am also a registered nurse, I'm a healthcare professional. I am a parent, a mother, we have a nineteen-month-old son. You know, if we were concerned, we wouldn't be interested in pursuing this project.
Uh, do you guys have any questions for me?
Well, I have a couple, because I, I know your, your agents did address some of them. Um, and the one that, and just want to kind of talk about is the pest control. Um, I know that we talked about the insect, but as far as the other, I guess, and I, I think it is a site by site, I mean, I, I think you need to, I guess, start that facility, that process, but I guess, I don't know. I probably would ask, is it Andy, if, if there's any other, can you kind of come up and talk about, or do you know about the other types of, because none of these are operating, are there any other pest control measures that anyone can talk about?
That's honestly not really my area.
What, what I can tell you is, one, one, after one of our early hearings, I went and talked to our poultry people that have done this for many, many years, and I said, "Have you ever had any problems with uh, animals getting into the mortality sheds, or, or pulling out, you know, birds?" And they said to, in their experience, in many, many years they've been doing this, they have not. Now, if Randy had a problem or began to have any kind of a challenge with that, he would be able to put a door on the front of those bins that could help prevent that if it was a problem. But generally speaking, we have not seen that as a problem in any, any cases, um, in any other operations.
Questions, Commissioner Short?
There was a reference to a berm which could be clued, included as part of, um, the application permit, and then fencing as well.
So we have, um, changed our mortality shed design. Um, putting an apron on the front of that, but with that apron is also a berm. So that would prevent any runoff. If, uh, for some reason, anything happened where that, uh, litter and mortality composting were to get wet, which, because it's covered, won't happen, more likely than not. I mean, it may be if there was some kind of driving force rain. Um, but otherwise, uh, you know, it, it will provide that being a paved area. Um, and then if there was any runoff, that berm would prevent it from going anywhere.
And fencing to help coyotes that were referenced earlier, would that be something that?
I guess it would depend on how ambitious the coyote is.
Any other questions? Seeing none?
I could add one, one thing on the composting thing. We, we work with, uh, a lot of different types of livestock, uh, several swine producers have gone to composting, and, and we see it work excellently, as long as they do a great job of covering the mortalities, and that's really comes down to management. And Randy's going to learn that, um, if, if they're covered well and buried deep enough, the critters can't find them, and they don't know they're there. Uh, if they're too shallow, they can get in and dig. So it's really a management issue, and, um, the, the litter serves as a great source, and it's, it's really fine and granular, and can cover them very well.
Any other questions? Okay, um, with that, uh, unless the applicant has anything else they want to?
No, I think we presented everything we wanted to present, other than my closing statement. Okay. Okay. Um, I'd like to thank you for the time you've taken to, um, here, everybody today. I want you to know, we truly believe in what we're doing. I'd like the opportunity to farm with my family. Um, this has been an incredible, difficult process. We have been working on the permit since the middle of June. What has been hard for me to grasp is the extent my specific project has caused such an uproar. There are currently several poultry barns in Lancaster County, and in spite of the fact that several of those projects were right outside of town, as my understanding, there's been no complaints have been filed um, on those operations, and at any point through any elected body or state agency. Although our barns are slightly different, and that some of the technology is even more advanced, they are very similar. We truly do not believe this will impact our neighbors in a negative way, and we'd like the opportunity to use our agricultural, agricultural land to diversify and grow our family farm. Thank you for your consideration.
Yep, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing um, for the special permit number one eight zero two five. Mr. Clerk, I don't know, I think there was a, a item held on the agenda.
This is under, um, new business. Three C is a resolution in a matter of County Special Permit Number one eight zero two five. Um, for the construction of commercial feedlot and property generally located at thirteen three fifty West Woodstruck Road.
Okay, I leave it up to the board, um, if there's any direction on how they'd like to proceed. Commissioner Amundson?
Well, I think that we've heard plenty of testimony, and I think we've had the opportunity to read a lot of the, uh, information and to see the hearing from the Planning Commission. And I think that we have done significant research. I believe that I feel comfortable enough to go forward with the decision today.
Commissioner Avery?
I disagree. We've heard a lot of, uh, uh, testimony today. It's only fair to the people who showed up, and to the people who didn't, by the way, but have an opinion on this. It is only fair that we take at least a few days to, uh, consider this evidence and information before we, uh, vote.
What else? Strong feelings?
I'm ready to vote today.
I am as well. I guess.
I would.
I I will jump out first. Um, I agree, Bill, that we have spent a lot of time reading and, and researching, we've all met with uh, neighbors, some of us more than once, or twice, or three times, I appreciate the input from, from staff. Um, but it goes back to why I was elected to do this job, and that's to, to listen, um, and to, and to learn. And this takes me back to, uh, one of the state statutes, uh, twenty-three dash one fourteen point oh three, which has to do with zoning regulations. And I'm going to paraphrase, "For the purpose of promoting health, safety, morals, convenience, order, prosperity, and the welfare of the present and future inhabitants of Nebraska, including, among others, such specific purposes as developing both urban and non-urban areas, lessening congestion in the streets or roads, lessening or avoiding hazards to persons and damage resulting from the accumulation or runoff of storm or floodwaters, providing adequate light and air, promoting such distribution of population, classification of land uses, distribution of land development that will assure adequate provisions for transportation, water flowage, water supply, drainage, sanitation, recreation, soil, fertility, food supply, other public requirements, protecting the tax base, protecting property against blight and depreciation, fostering the state's agriculture, recreation, and other industries, and encouraging the most appropriate use of land in the county." With those, uh, comments in mind, I will move that, uh, we deny the permit.
Motion?
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the permit. Um, is there any discussion? And I, I guess I'll go, I'm going to vote against your motion. I, I understand your, your perspective, but I think the issues that we were presented with today actually do, um, I think, meet those standards, and I think that, you know, when I look at issues, land use issues especially, I think back to when we were doing commercial wind energy, and I use the same standard that I will use today, which is, you know, what would I do if I were put in that position? Um, as a neighbor, you know, I, I, I understand that the concerns are valid. Um, but I think that the overwhelming science that was presented, the evidence that was presented, presented by staff, um, presented by the state, Department of Agriculture, Department of Environmental Quality, I think a lot of the issues, again, comes back to, you know, they're, they're have been unknowns, but I, I think a lot of that information, uh, has been, um, presented that would overcome and provide information about, um, the land use. So it really comes back to what is, is the land use. I mean, this area is zoned agriculture. Um, and this is a, you know, a commercial feedlot, or feeding operation, is something that is permitted. Uh, you know, I represent a district, District Five, which includes Waverly, um, which we have, um, well, in the county zoning area, we do have a facility um, that was permitted, um, uh, several years ago, with an, a recent expansion. I know that there is potential for additional, um, issues within the three-mile, or whatever, within the zoning area of Waverly. And so, uh, you know, again, I, I, I'm going to apply the same standard that, that was applied to them, was applied to the Firth. And so, and again, I think the, one of the issues with this is why there's um, so much opposition is because of the, the applicant and the company that's associated with it. Because, you know, the last time that we had a poultry operation, uh, before the Planning Commission, it was approved seven-nothing. I'm sorry, unanimously, which I think was nine-nothing. And so I'm just, you know, like I said, it's, it's, it's a standard. Um, I think it's a fairness issue to the applicant that we do apply the same standards. So, so I will be voting against the motion. So, I will be voting against the motion. I don't know.
Well, I believe that I'm the only one on the county board who has an immediate farming background, as I grew up on a 480-acre farm. I am a farmer's daughter, and while it's been a reasonably long time since I have been on the farm, since and actively involved in the area, I do have an understanding of the changes that have occurred in the farming industry. Significant changes are occurring, and I think that the advent of the CAFOs is a, is one indication of those changes. Now, the applicant has voluntarily accepted additional requirements for his operation, has requested to be, and has requested to be permitted, which I think speaks very well for his intent to operate a very well-regulated CAFO. I also represent District Four, which has a CAFO near Firth, and I receive no complaints from the constituents in my district. And so, based upon the information presented by the applicant and his supporting team, the recommendations from the state and the local regulatory agencies, our own government agencies, and the precedents already established by the approval of other CAFOs in Lancaster County, and by the fact that he, that all the zoning requirements are being met in an ag area, I will vote to, also to deny what the motion has been.
I'm going to vote against the motion for denial. First, I want to thank everybody that's participated in this process, both through the Planning Commission and today's hearing. I think that the proposed conditions that are included in the permit that we are looking at are a direct result of the process that we've gone through. And for me, I think our role is to provide a review and implement any additional safeguards to provide reasonable protections, to ensure that we minimize risks to health, safety, and welfare, as Commissioner Short indicated. But within that context, I do think we have to utilize the guiding principles within our comprehensive plan that speak to predictability and fairness in our planning process to allow for these kinds of businesses. And in this case, I like Commissioner Amundson and encouraged by the fact that the applicant has decided to seek additional regulation beyond what is currently required by both our zoning regulations and other permitting processes at play. And I think we need to support development innovation in an industry that is so vital to our state and is clearly supported by our comprehensive plan. I've been in a position where I had to represent a controversial project to a large community. Ten years ago, I worked for two years to get the West Haymarket Arena project passed, and as we finished up that project, we heard a lot of concerns about the environment and the risk to our economy and our tax base, and whether the research and work we had done to put together a plan for voters to react to was good enough. We were told that it wasn't the first or second review for the environment that was needed, but it was a third, and it would have been a fourth. And so, in my experience, what I know is that these kinds of projects are vetted well, and I have faith in the regulatory agencies that have reviewed the process to date, and also know that there are additional regulations that will need to be implemented and reviewed before this process comes to an end. I will acknowledge the concerns that we've heard from the neighbors, and I'm grateful for their input. I am talking to my fellow commissioners about pursuing a future review of our current zoning code to create better expectations for any future potential applicants, and that language will also include a review and to talk about strengthening our ability to utilize financial penalties when conditions of special permits are violated by operators, which is a tool that we do not have available to us today. I also want to just touch very briefly on the complaint system, because in the last couple of months, we've seen the implementation of the complaint system for a special permit that was issued in the county, and it is my, my reaction that that system can work well, and I want to assure neighbors that we've seen it in action, and our health department will react to complaints if those conditions are not met by the operator. But I really feel like today, we don't have data or information from the agencies charged with reviewing this application that provides us a legal basis to deny this permit, and so for these reasons, I'm going to oppose the denial motion.
Bill or Deputy, one of them?
My motion.
Okay. No discussion? Okay. Okay, seeing no other additional discussion, Mr. Clerk, would you please provide a roll call for the motion, which is to deny the special permit?
Brinkman?
No.
Short?
Yes.
Amundson?
No.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
No.
Motion fails three to two.
I will make a motion to approve the special permit as presented.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the special permit number 18025 as proposed. I guess, is there any discussion?
I have a question for staff, if we can, about a potential amendment to the conditions which have to do with the county engineer's discussion of any potential increase in the average daily traffic count.
Steve just brought down some draft language for that.
Steve Hendrickson at the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department. I don't know if I need to be sworn in at this point or not. Just quick, talked with Pam Dingman in the back. These would be two conditions that we would recommend to address something that you stated previously. These would be item condition 2.2.3. This is in the section that talks about as long as they're operating on the site. So, these are ongoing conditions in terms of the resolution. No traffic from the facility may exit or enter from the east as long as a railroad crossing is not improved. I think this is trying to address that if at some point in the future it was improved, then that condition wouldn't apply. And 2.2.4 is if more than fifty truck, fifty semi-trucks average daily traffic from the site, then the applicant shall enter into a maintenance agreement to the satisfaction of the county engineer. And so, in talking to Pam Dingman, that was the threshold that she had in mind.
I'd like to amend my motion to include these two conditions as part of the permit.
Will this second or-
I will agree with that.
Okay. We now have a motion and a second to approve the County Special Permit Number 18025 as amended by Commissioner Brinkman and seconded by Commissioner Amundson. Any additional discussion?
We don't need a separate vote on amending the permit, is my question.
Remedy, a sec.
Well, as the maker of the motion, I was going to include that, but I guess, you want to-
As long as everybody is clear that we don't need another vote.
Jen, there's a legal question. Can you come up? Just to make sure we're doing this legally, the amendment, do we need to vote on the amendment?
And then vote on the amended permit. Is it two votes or one?
Okay, so you mean to amend the permit with these new conditions?
Yes.
No, you can, your motion, your seconded motion now includes these new conditions.
Okay.
So, you can vote on it as the-
As amended.
As the package.
Yep, as amended.
Right, and I'll get these added right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Okay, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Short?
No.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
No.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries three to two.
Move adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you all for your patience, and have a good evening.